Once it's officially six o'clock, we can start. You can't start the meetings early. You can be very late, but you can't start them early. So that's why we sit here for a minute or two in silence.
We have ten seconds.
It is six o'clock. Will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Lawrence, here. Trustee Lawler.
Here.
Trustee Lee Platt. Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Mayor Dodge.
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll proceed to the approval of the September 2nd, 2025 Committee of the Whole Minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole of September 2nd, 2025.
Second. It's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Are there any non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda-specific public comment? Seeing none, we will proceed to the Orland Park Police Department's badge-pinning and swearing-in ceremony of recently-certified police officers and new sergeants.
So ladies and gentlemen, Orland Park is blessed that every now and again, as a community and as a board, we get to do these. And so we're not going to have any long speeches, certainly from this board, because this night is about the officers who are joining Orland Park and for everybody here who's family. It's a pretty important night, and we appreciate it. So we'll let this ceremony get going. Chief?
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Chief Rossi. I've been in Orland Park for twenty years. Just want to say thank you to the American Village Board for allowing us to have our office four years ago. We've been working hard. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. We've got seven officers and two partners. We've come in together. I work a lot of joy. I have my first, and I want to give a big round of applause to the officers.
I guess I'll use this so you can hear me on YouTube. So once again, I just want to say thank you to the family. Once the swearing-in is done and the badges are pinned on the officers, we're going to have some pictures, and I invite the families to come up with the officers and take pictures. But like I said, we're going to have nine swearing-in tonight. And I want to introduce the Chairman of Board Fire Police Commissioners, Dave O'Connor, who will be doing the swearing-in tonight.
Good evening, gentlemen. By way of introduction, my name is Dave O'Connor. I chair the Fire Police Commission here at Orland Park, and I've done so for the last twenty-six years. I'm very blessed to work on behalf of a village that truly honors and appreciates the policing that occurs in this particular community. We can all rest our heads safe based upon the many women that have dedicated their lives in this particular municipality. So we certainly do appreciate that. As far as the Fire Police Commission, our responsibility is to participate in the recruitment, hiring, promotion, and termination of Orland Park police officers. Anytime that we're bringing in new police officers, we welcome them to an extraordinary family. And tonight, we have the pleasure of swearing-in two new sergeants and seven new officers. So as the chief has said, this is one of the largest swearing-ins that we've ever had. So please bear with us. With that, if we can bring forward.
Charles Kirby.
Sergeant Kirby began his career with the Orland Park Police Department in May of 2006. Furthering his expertise, he became a school resource officer at Sandberg High School in 2020. In July of 2025, Chuck was promoted to the rank of sergeant, a testament to his leadership and dedication.
Officer, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Charles Kirby.
I, Charles Kirby.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
And ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
And ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Office of the Office of Police Sergeant.
Of the Office of Police Sergeant.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Sergeant Charles Kirby.
Sergeant Kirby will be pinned by his wife, Trager.
I will say that is record timing. There's usually a text like five minutes in somebody, the badge on there. Good job.
Officer Jonathan Bosinski, please step forward.
Sergeant Jonathan Bosinski began his career with the Orland Park Police Department on July 9th, 2017. His commitment to investigative work led to his appointment in the Investigations Unit in 2024. Furthering his expertise, he became a member of the Sosseburgin Major Crimes Task Force in 2024. In July of 2025, John was promoted to the rank of sergeant, a testament to his leadership and dedication.
Sir, raise your right hand.
I, Jonathan Bosinski.
I, Jonathan Bosinski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
And ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
And ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Police Sergeant.
Of the Office of Police Sergeant.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Sergeant Bosinski.
Sergeant Bosinski will be pinned by his father, Bart.
Eric Guzman, please step forward.
Police Officer Eric Guzman was hired by the Orland Park Police Department in January of 2025. He graduated from the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy in April of 2025.
Sir, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Eric Guzman.
I, Eric Guzman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
And ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
And ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Officer Eric Guzman.
Officer Guzman will be pinned by his father, Gerardo.
Dominic Tilka, please step forward.
Police Officer Dominic Tilka was hired by the Orland Park Police Department in January of 2025. He graduated from the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy in April of 25.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dominic Tilka.
I, Dominic Tilka.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
And ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
And ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Officer Dominic Tilka.
Officer Tilka will be pinned by his mother, Kathy.
Abdel Muhammad, please step forward.
Police Officer Abdel Muhammad was hired by the Orland Park Police Department in January of 2025. He graduated from the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy in April of 2025.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Abdel Muhammad.
I, Abdel Muhammad.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
And ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
And the ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Police Officer.
The duties of the Office of Police Officer.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Officer Abdel Muhammad.
Police Officer Mohamed will be pinned by his father, Abdel.
Ryan Kammer, please step forward.
Police Officer Ryan Kramer, Kammer, joined the Orland Park Police Department in March of 2025. Bringing valuable experiences of his time with the Will County Sheriff's Police Department. He is currently assigned to Patrol Division on the afternoon shift, where he continues to serve with dedication and professionalism.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan Kammer.
I, Ryan Kammer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
And ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
And ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Officer Ryan Kammer.
Police Officer Kammer will be pinned by his wife, Ashley.
Owen Reedy, please step forward.
Police Officer Owen Reedy joined the Orland Park Police Department in March of 2025, bringing valuable experience from his time at the Blue Island Police Department. He is currently assigned to Patrol Division on the day shift, where he continues to serve with dedication and professionalism.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Owen Reedy.
I, Owen Reedy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
And ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
And ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Officer Owen Reedy.
Police Officer Owen Reedy will be pinned by his wife, Katie.
Kristin Kowalski, please step forward.
Police Officer Kristin Kowalski was hired by the Orland Park Police Department in August of 2025. He graduated from the Illinois State Police Academy in June of 2025.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kristin Kowalski.
I, Kristin Kowalski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
And ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
And the ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Officer Kristin Kowalski.
Police Officer Kristin Kowalski will be pinned by his mother, Danielle.
Last, but certainly not least, Patrick Rafferty. Step forward.
Police Officer Patrick Rafferty was hired by the Orland Park Police Department in August of 2025. He graduated from the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy in April of 2025.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Patrick Rafferty.
I, Patrick Rafferty.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
I will enforce all laws of the state.
And ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
And ordinances of the Village of Orland Park.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
For the Orland Park Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Officer Patrick Rafferty.
Police Officer Patrick Rafferty will be pinned by his father, Matthew.
Pat, you stay up for a picture with the mayor. I'm good. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. You've got the compresses and coffee and water. We allow you if you want to join the officers. We have one more ten item for some other employee recognitions, and we'll call the meeting off. So we'll be done, Charlie.
Quarterly Employee Recognition.
Regina, will you take us through this?
Good evening, Mayor, Village Board. Continuing in the theme of employee recognition, I would like to turn your attention to recognize some very special employees who demonstrate hard work and commitment to the organization and the community they so proudly serve. These individuals that you see listed on the screen here celebrated milestone anniversaries during the month of May through September this year, and we thank them for their service and their dedication to the Village of Orland Park. Two of these individuals, I see one of them. I don't know if one got lost in the crowd out there, but two of these individuals are supposed to be in attendance tonight. So I would like to call each of them up individually to receive an award and personal recognition from Mayor Dodge. The first individual has been with the Recreation Department for ten years. So I would like to congratulate Ms. Jean Petro. Thank you, Jean, for your service and dedication to the organization. Okay, so this second individual is a biggie this year. Mr. Ryan Callahan has dedicated thirty years of service to the Village of Orland Park with the Public Works Department. Ryan, come on out, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Which was a good one. For people of Orland Park.
Congratulations.
Come on up, family.
Thank you for your time tonight to recognize these employees.
Okay. Any non-scheduled citizens and visitors for public comment on items relevant to village business? Seeing none, I'll proceed. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman? Move to adjourn?
Second.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Leblot.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge. Mayor Dodge? We are adjourning at 6:25. We will be back for the regular meeting at 7:00.